I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any reports or additions or corrections?
Let's go through.
Motion by Moore.
I will second.
Second, please. Rick. We have a unit in a print. I would favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion made. Motion carried. We have minutes from January twenty-one.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes on September twenty-first. Second.
One for Jerry, second by Bruce, for seven minutes at a print. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion made. Motion carried. Do we have comments or nutheries warning on agenda? We'll move on, Dean, I think you're first on tap here.
Just do.
Harry.
Alright, um, I'd like to introduce Shirley Dumgard. Um, she's one of our newest jailers, uh, just asking for the board's approval and everything, so.
What's that bring your total in for part-time jailers? Three total numbers?
Uh, I've got one full-time and then seven part-timers, so.
Eight total.
Eight total, yes.
And the part-timers get about how many hours of leave roughly? It varies.
It varies from, from, uh, it depends.
That can be from ten to twenty-five or something like that.
Yeah, 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 well, it's from eight to twenty-four to thirty-two or whatever.
Oh, yeah, sure. So then, um, um, it's always one jailer on duty all the time, was there ever two?
No, just always one.
No, just one. The other thing to share is that now.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Dean.
Yep.
How do you get that meeting on a rotating schedule, so it's always worth the same schedule, or?
We, we try to, uh, keep it kind of a, you know, the schedule the same, so that they know when their day's off are gonna be and stuff, so.
Very good. Well, alrighty.
Glad to have you.
Do we have a vote? Anything else, Dean?
Nope.
We have a motion here to approve Shirley Dumgard.
I'll make the motion.
That raised thirteen dollars and thirty-seven cents an hour retroactive, twenty-four. Motion by Bruce.
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Other discussion? All those who favor the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Motion made. Motion carried, welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Jana, we have a tax request.
Yeah, this is a letter from the city of Rindwick. Their final step in acquiring properties from the public nuisance and public bidder, tax sales. It's actually, I think, what I'd say, four owners.
Mm-hmm. Four owners on six lots. And I report that one, Mark Peterson, one that's been leveled and cleared off.
And they're intent to sell them to the neighbors.
To the next, so they're trying to get taxes cleared out and not sell the empty lots back to, um...
Cause they're the public nuisance properties, they were, were abandoned.
They go ahead and seed them, and that's basically what they're gonna end up being in their lives. I wonder if that minimum one might have been that Albrecht one maybe, possibly.
Oh, that's possible.
Cause now he said that.
Cause they had like three of them.
Yeah. And I'm not sure about the brochure, but North one, that one, they may be in the process of working on. It's a good deal. I know they cleaned up four properties here in the last two years, and they've got a couple more on the list for next, it's, I, maybe October first is the new year for the fire department, they can burn two a year. I know they've got two lined up to burn already, I think, I suppose it's after October first, possibly. So they might have a different year in, so. It's a good program for me, they got a lot of houses that have been let go, and some of them have bad fuel running out of them, you know, rentals, so it's a good thing to get the help.
But they, once they clear them, their hope is re-sell them in Elizabethville?
Yeah, I think Bruce, most of these have already been spoken for, the neighbors said they would be interested if the city would help clean them up. So what the city's been doing is providing equipment, and buyers sometimes help do some stuff to kind of move it along, and then, once they get leveled up and filled with dirt, then the whole more can see.
Right, see.
I don't know what to take.
Out of guard or something.
In fact, one of them, I know, one of the original two before these, grouping, one gentleman who bought it, I think he's gonna put a building on their shed shop, so it'll get someone back on the tax bills under just a lot, so.
We're really paying about eighteen hundred bucks to get those back on the tax bills.
Yeah, we're ending up in the process.
Doesn't make all that sense.
I'll make a motion to request a tax tip and see if...
Not get nothing out of it.
On the six parcels.
Motion by Jerry.
Sorry, I can't.
Second by Bruce.
May I just say a moment?
Oh, I didn't know. Oh, I didn't have those.
About eighteen hundred dollars, I didn't have enough.
You can take anything.
Okay, all those favor the motion of tax abatement, say aye.
Aye.
Motion made. Motion carried.
Alright, thank you, Steve.
Okay, we'll put down the approved claims.
I would make a motion for claims of a hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-seven cents, and drain for two hundred and ninety-six thousand and one hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty cents.
Okay, we have a motion by Moore to approve the claims as stated, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Other discussion concerning the claims? All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion made. Motion carried. Okay, we got a little bit of time here, uh, can drain, can call this, we claim to authorize chairman to sign a waiver for all confinement permits of Brandon Trogger.
Okay, um, we just come back, we approved the, um, confinement permit for Brandon Trogger doing this at the Grandview Scott Farm. Um, received a letter for, or email from the DNR person, and she said they would like to get started, um, getting the building together for home weather, or in the town you'd be willing to waive the fourteen-day, um, process that you have, where you can object or appeal. So prepare the letter if you want to go ahead and approve it, if you don't, that's okay too.
Rick and I are familiar with the area, and he's already got one building there, it's gonna be next to the other one, it's on a good location, it meets all the setbacks.
Yeah, it's up on high ground.
It's well-maintained, it's not near a creek or situations like that.
I can't see any reason why we'd ever appeal it.
No. I think it's just a work in progress, adding, uh, additional building, next to the one he's got, so.
I'll make a motion that we waive our appeal.
I'll second it.
Motion, second. Motion, we, Rick, second, but Jerry, to waive the deal for confinement permit of Brandon Trogger. Other discussion? All those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion made. Motion carried. Do we do reports?
Sure. Do that, too. Alright, let's see, September twenty-third, I had my CSS meeting, and, oh, it's not a good start, here we go. And that, I actually went to clearing because the meeting was in, um, Morrison Isle, which is gonna be about a two-hundred dollar road trip. Sorry, I decided I'll just go to clearing, cause our agenda wasn't that. The tell-a-side is nice when you don't have a heavy agenda, so you don't have to drive so far, so, I mean, next year I'll be chairman, that's, I may have to go to most of them, but I thought this one wasn't, you know, that's, when you gotta drive two hours and then charge the county separately, that's kinda stuff. Anyway, pretty good meeting, uh, oh, let's see if I can find some highlights. It's interesting, our region, twenty-two county region, we serve about two thousand two hundred and seventy people, and that's down to some degree because of the changes that are going on in the healthcare and Medicaid stuff. But the average cost per ser- person is like six hundred and thirty-one dollars, so that costs going up. So what you're finding is more and more getting on the healthcare system, Medicare system, or getting independent living, the ones that are left are gonna be more severe, and the cost per person is gonna be higher. We look like, we have about seventeen million dollar revenue per year out of twenty-two counties, which is three, seven, eighteen tax assessment, and it looks like we're gonna spend about twenty point eight million this year. So, part of this is getting these people out of these homes, you know, independent living, there's some costs there. We hope about another year if I don't run short, but then we should, we, we should be getting out of breaking, and like, so we do have like, seven and a half million, I think, in reserves, so it's not an issue today, but it's not gonna, I mean, we're gonna have to cut down these, and get back in line, which we will, I don't see that being a problem. But this whole transition is really time-consuming, expensive, and we're still a lost direction on how case management's gonna be run. I think there's some, is there, did you have a meeting last week with IME? IME have a meeting somewhere?
We had a case management meeting in our human services.
Since we got time, can you tell us a little bit what we had?
Basically, they had a meeting, Friday, spotted from by Midas.
Okay, that's what it was.
Medicaid.
That's what it was.
And mostly a health provider there, yeah, upstairs.
Kathy.
Kathy was there, and her counterparts from the job in the Incan area, only three separate from there, we kind of worked out of water, but there's a lot of things that haven't been brought to, to light yet, that go into effect January one, two thousand sixteen.
That seems to be a concern, are we gonna be ready by that?
And it affects new health, home health there, as well Medicaid, it's a confusing issue, and just, no idea what's going on, sure.
There was a lot of discussion, and openness, but not really a lot of clarity, correct? That's kinda the way this meeting went, too. And, um, you know, you gotta work with system, hope that we're, got the things in place that we need to be done. Um, oh, interesting though, they had a map they put up, and there's about four workshop areas in our region, one's Fort Dodge, and then ours, of course, and then there was, I wish they had a copy of that Black Hawk County, there was, there's one other one. But they spent sixty-two thousand on that artwork, you know, they took over that here a few years ago, and, you know, that was part of our budget, of course, and we said we weren't gonna fund anymore, well, they picked that up. They're still doing those things, but really, the problem is, you know, it's just like we have a little workshop here, some of the workshops, like the one where they make the coffee, they're doing things and they make some revenue, they're, and they're productive type jobs, you know, on, what they're trying to do is get them out of those type situations, they wanna be a real workforce, spread out across the community, but it's still hard to get individuals into that kind of work situation. What they're talking a little bit about is using job coach, job coaches, job coaches. So it'd be an individual that probably be hired on a salary, it would go out with maybe six individuals and work with them as far as, you know, getting into the workforce, finding out what, you know, their needs are, what things they need to do for the employer to make it work, you know. I don't know, it's, they're all, they're trying to, you know, co-mingle in society without being individualized into a, you know, into a factory-type setting or whatever, so. I don't know, some of these things are bold, it just, it depends on how the funding's gonna be, we could fund that. There's certain things that CSS will be able to do, but we aren't gonna be able to do new things without a budget cash flow to make that work, so, I mean, it's, it's kinda gonna be up there how much we can do and can't do.
You want to play them, that was Eldon Ridge, those people were there.
I suppose.
So they're, they got...
They got a stake in this, too, don't they?
It's a big...
Yeah, I wish I could be more affirmative with anything going on, I, sometimes I, I'm just going in circles trying to understand, you know, but, and they also, you know, they're, these county homes that you guys are all familiar with, you know, there's, there's one in Duncan, like you said, as an example, they got like thirty-one people, and two years ago, they're almost down to the sixteen state wants, you know, those, they want those units to be under sixteen, they don't want it to be in groups, I mean, they want it to be more of a hospitalized type setting for the worst patients that need help. So, as we go on, they're trying to close those buildings, you know, a lot of them are being closed, some of them are trying to get down to the sixteen, so that they can be a, you know, a unit to work out of, but, you know, all these changes, you gotta find hope, you gotta find housing for all these people, you know, you gotta help them get it set up, you gotta help get a budget, and their funding's gotta match to get into these houses, so, the transition thing is quite extensive. It's moving forward, and that's what we're gonna have to work on, so. I'll just try to keep you informed, I'm sure by January first, we're gonna have a few more issues to talk about.
Another thing on this, this charity situation, they all get assigned to a position, medical, and if they don't, they have to sign up by December thirty-first, then you got ninety-eight who don't like who they signed up, so it's transferred to somebody else.
Right. You are correct, they can transfer if they don't like who they've been assigned to before this started.
It's a hard job to figure that out.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay, uh, Tuesday afternoon, I met with Dave Minikis from the more engineering out of the landfill, and, um, means I'm taking over Harland's position on that, he brought me kind of up to speed up there, showed me where all the test wells are, and all the, looking at his and all that stuff, and they're gonna be doing a little work out there this fall, capping some leachate lines that are underneath there, and they got them plugged right now, and they just seem happy with the plug, they wanna cap the lines. Um, so it's kinda interesting, kinda got to good handle on what's going on out there. And, uh, he says, did all the water tests, and he says they all look real good, um, he says the levels after testing it are almost like drinking water level, which is how you just kinda observe, but, but anyway, it, um, everything looked good out there, he had zero problems coming down the road, so that was good. And then, uh, was it noon on Wednesday we had the roundtable call? Yeah. Noon on Wednesday, I was up to Cornbelt for a roundtable meeting, we had Tim Cryanbrink out there, and Mike Suxton, and some of the people in the community business done a little bit about our concerns, and it was rather interesting. That's about all I have.
Okay, Friday, let's see what was the date, twenty-fifth, uh, had seven judicial and Webster City. Paul Two was in charge of, um, doing two of the bylaws, doing an update, and it eliminated one paragraph on, uh, computer security, and, but it was already covered in two other paragraphs, so they just eliminated this one. Um, there was an update on, uh, Cuso, that sexual practice, and, uh, but it was costing, I think, if they're living on their own, you know, something that was nineteen dollars a day, and if they're residential, it's eighty bucks a day, so.
Let's see, what else did I have?
Well, we had the same budget this, this year, we had a year before, we wanted a million five hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, no change in the budget, so. Um, and I guess that was, well, we did let two coaching contracts, too, you were talking about coaching contracts, so, yeah, we let two of them, that's for getting inmates back in there.
That's the same type of job, I would say.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my thought.
Okay, that was all I had.
Do you have a meeting?
I'm trying to find all the papers that I have. On the twenty, Wednesday, the twenty-third, I had, uh, they had the Elmo Coffee upstairs, and I got to do my, uh, orientation with Jamie, and I haven't heard that I flunked, so I guess I'm officially on the board. Um, we have our first meeting tomorrow night, and I'm gonna go to Eagle Grove, I guess, rather than Bradinger, so. And on the twenty-fourth, we had our CFR meeting down in Webster City, um, got our, our, uh, monthly update on how things are going down there, and Michelle, Phila, Revere?
Revia.
Revere, yeah.
Yeah, Revere.
Uh, was the, headed that, uh, I was visiting with her afterwards, and she's offered to come up and talk to the board, and give us an update on how things are going, uh, from her perspective, and I gave her the invitation, and as soon as she was at the, in September, we're, about to the end of September here, and it was, uh, recovery month proclamation, so hopefully she's gonna get up here in the next week or two and address the board, and give them an update as to things that are going on with the board, so.
I guess there is a copy of last month, or last week, I guess, on what it helped, you know, statistics for public companies, some things are, you know, they're, we're coming down a little bit on the outside a little bit, but the usage of marijuana is extremely high, growing fast, and, you know, not that you can solve all these problems head-on, but sometimes, you know, just maybe more awareness, children early on would be a good idea. One thing I like about Michelle is she could come up here and present herself very well, she wouldn't force anything on anybody, but she could show you, what I would, I think she'll do, in my opinion, she, she'll show you what's working in other counties, what they've gone into, and how they've got, you know, how that's made things a better situation in those counties. They've got good programs available, some, available, sometimes I just don't think we take advantage of them. Now, you know, the leadership we had before that, this wasn't something he, they were more willing to do, but this group is more willing to get involved and engage, and, I mean, facing these problems that become at all problems, if you could address them earlier on, it would save counties, it would save families, communities a lot of money, cause some of these issues get pretty deep, and people get into their forties and fifties and have nothing left in their life, and they turn on what family members are lucky to help, and if they didn't have that support, they, you know, they'd be an institution, so.
And I think they're, they're in the process of making some decisions, that hopefully in the next few months will be made public and, and help us all, help all the counties that are involved, yeah.
Yeah.
So, as soon as Michelle lets me know her schedule, I'll get ahold of us, they're on the agenda.
I think it's good to invite her down, she's been to some service clubs here in town, she also works with chambers in some counties, some cities, they don't do that very much here, but that'd be a good intro.
She's a good speaker, she'll take charge.
Communications.
Right. So, that's all I have.
Very good, I think I got twelve of them.
I got two.
On Tuesday, Peggy and I were in Des Moines for the ISAC legislative policy, publicity finalization, from each, uh, new, what do you call them, affiliate, and Max, and developed their policies, and we came together, there's at least one representative from each, each group, Peggy being president-elect of ISAC, chaired the thing, did a good job, we supposed to go to two o'clock, I think she got it, and she did, and probably mental health came to the top, I think, as far as the legislative proposal that we wanna work on. It's a big concern nationwide, countywide, statewide, nobody knows what's going on for sure, but you gotta get a handle on it. Some of the other things we talked about with property tax, whether or not to keep funding the property tax relief, or get that filling back, filling in, one of the things I tried to get for us on, as far as agriculture go, and we didn't have enough folks to go with, we need help with the ag buildings, so we have to provide highway roads and maintain all this, and we don't get any more money for it, but they didn't think they'd get that through, maybe work on it in the next five years. Peggy, what else can we do there?
Um, one of the general money was, um, the county attorney's not getting their money back, um, they want to bring, bring a upside firm in to collect the money, and of course, they'll charge a percent of that that they recover, um, they want to make the county to do that themselves, so, so I'm gonna be more effective at that, and they can be the way they need to.
These affiliate had a little, little breakbeat they like to get through, but I knew it all clearly prioritized four or five.
Public health was one of them, another big concern, public health.
Still saying it'll be over for the legislature, legislative about next year, and the session starts, so I think we're ready.
And this fall, they'll bring them forward at that fall ISAC meeting to, to know what the top priorities are, if they could, or top priority.
We get some good people working for us, Lucas used to be a county supervisor over Wright County, he, like, he worked with the legislature, Jamie Gadsden does a great job, Bill does a good job, so we got some, we got some, and Bill Hittroff, or, they all know those guys, like, first name down there, so, I think, if you ever heard Justin talk to those, but they say also it's more effective, we personally do it, rather than try to always run through the legislative loggers. So Peggy and I were at that same meeting, that was on Tuesday. On Wednesday night, I had, no, Wednesday noon, I went to the same meeting, it was regulated on the roundtable, we had the legislature, they're talking about, everybody had their hand out, wanted to know what we could do, what it came, what it came, whatever it was, I feel sorry for those guys, it's, anyway, that's, you have to keep asking. Monday night, I went to a Midas meeting at Fort Dodge, basically routine budget and so forth, my main thrust that night was to buy some buses, and I didn't realize it, but Neo Team pays for part of the buses, about seventy percent of the buses, which you have to work with Neo Team, follow their plans and so forth. I understand also, I didn't ask a lot of questions, but this new building is supposed to be in the Humboldt County, I guess it's been delayed for a year.
No, it hasn't been, just we're getting into the late in year.
Fifth one that was going up by the new water tower?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Is it outside the water tower or inside?
Definitely one of those locations.
I don't know that general area, I didn't know exactly where. Yeah, must be next to it, so that's...
There ain't a lot of room there, no.
No, there isn't, it would be a very big area.
Then on Friday, for Jerry, you and I talked about this, Midas sponsored a meeting from Department of Human Services to talk about Medicaid in the state of Iowa, we've talked about some of that things already. Then after going to that, we made some phone calls, and we got a meeting set up for, for Cedar Rapids, we're gonna have supervisors from Wright County and some from Millstone to talk about the epidemic with the poultry disease, if it ever hits your county, what would you do while you have it? We got a panel put together on that, so I think it'd be kinda interesting, we can see what would happen if it had been us, what players, what, what do you have to do, what do you have to consider, definitely. So that was it for the week for me, Peggy. Is it nine o'clock yet? Five minutes, Bill. Anything else we can do, five minutes before we go to training?
Um, I received this as an email from another auditor, um, I don't know if any of you guys have heard anything about his resolution to support a constitutional amendment to restore the right to limit spending in our elections, and for state and federal lawmaking to assure transparency such that entities and persons spending significant sums in our elections are known to the public. And she was wondering if our board had passed such a resolution, and evidently ISAC wasn't aware of it, because Kristi Harshberger asked me if you guys had passed a resolution, and I didn't, so I don't know for sure if we had, and that's the first I've ever heard.
Other counties passed it?
She didn't say, she just said, was asking, somebody...
Who did this come from?
Presented, we left, oh, somebody presented.
Hey, from Lloyd, Kelly, or, um, I know, I can look in my book and find it, but, no.
Yeah.
It doesn't say.
Yeah, I know what you're getting at. No, I just said it's a person's lot of resolution, the board, you know.
But evidently it's been, you know, talked about.
Doesn't mean that you'd have to pass it, I mean, it sounded like this, it was trying to...
Yeah, they were just seeking...
The worst thing about resolutions, you don't wanna pass too many, I mean, more than you need to, either, or something.
And maybe just something to kinda keep on her...
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Kind of watch and see.
I heard on Tuesday morning, Peggy, you got a little feather in Manhattan, you're talking about voting machines, and how many of them across the state of Iowa are obsolete now, they got chips in the same replaced, and they said the county needs to be active and getting replaced, but I think you got some good...
We get it, just very tired.
Some of them are, they're in trouble now, they can't find repairs for...
CNN, that was...
Tell me, got a few extras, we can go some parts, some little parts.
Well, I was, and when they came to load them all up, there were two guys, and I was putting everything down that I was holding, and I was willing to help them load them up to get rid of them, cause they were so big and heavy, and, you know, new equipment is small, it's easy to work with. And I asked the guy, what are you gonna do with them, would you take them back? You know, they take them in trade, they didn't give us a ton of money, I think we got three hundred and some dollars, three ninety-seven out of each one of them, but they can take part of them, and he was, yeah.
Yeah, they said that many, many counties are tearing some of them apart to get repairs for the ones that still work.
Yeah.
Your way, Peggy, anything?
Thank goodness, yeah.
Okay, I think it's, anything else before we go to Grange? Okay, I need a motion, go to Grange.
I don't know. I'll second.
By Moore, second by Rick, go to Grange, all those who favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion made. We are in Grange.
If you want to hand me the box, I can take that with me.
Yeah.
Rick, if you will sign this for me, um, on the claims for the LEC, I changed one, the third one I reduced it by about seven dollars, so you could already sign that back earlier in September, but I was getting all the LEC stuff, and I thought, probably she's only signing the first one, so it'd be a little more...
It's amazing how the committee meeting, you need that for a week, you figure out all the waiting for it, but have a day here, an hour here, and have a day there, you're a week shot. Hello.
Hey, Rick.
Okay, we moved to training, and we have an item here, DD six, letter A one. I think that's a full record, we're going to revisit, right?
Yes, yes, we're going to revisit this. Um, I came down last week and met with commissioners, met with the landowner to talk through benefits. Um, I'm going to give you a drawing here. Uh, the commissioners agreed that an adjustment would be appropriate, and what I brought back to you today is two possible adjustments, that they're happy with either of them. Oops, I think I might have given two of them. Um, just very quickly, what this is, is that it was our first attempt at adjustment. The numbers you see handwritten in there is what I multiplied the existing points by. For example, up in section twenty-five, I multiplied all of them by point seven five. In other words, I reduced theirs twenty-five percent.
Okay. So, everything was on a one-to-one basis before you started, is that what you said?
Right, correct.
All right.
One-to-one, based on solos.
Based on where you were.
Yes.
With the first go-around.
Yes, that is correct. This was the adjustment that we started with, a discussion we had last week when I was down here, so, um.
And you met last.
Friday, was it Friday?
You already met Friday.
Yeah.
You met last one too, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah, yeah, I did. So, I'm going to give you this, this, this represents the new numbers based on this drawing I gave you. Now, keep in mind, we did do a little bit of adjustment again, um, but this gives you an idea, um. So, yeah, to.
Got to get it organized.
Okay. This basically adjusts section twenty-five down twenty-five percent, um, and then it actually increased some of those just to the rest of the end of the new tile. So, you can see some of those, yeah, some of those went up twenty-five percent, so, the most reduction we had was twenty-five percent, the most increase we had was twenty-five percent on our first go-around. Just, just as something to compare, um, KMTs, which is near the end of the, right at the end of the new tile, they, they were paying thirty-four point nine percent of the total assessment. Thirty-four point nine. So, with the adjustment here, their assessment jumped up to forty point nine percent of the total levy. And they have thirty-two point three percent of the area, so, um. That, that was the first attempt. What the commissioners wanted to do then was look at additional adjustment. So, we did another adjustment, not, not a lot different. Those that we had point seven five on, we took point seven oh. So, instead of reducing them twenty-five percent, we reduced them thirty percent. Um, and the only ones we adjusted on the second adjustment were the ones that were going down, we didn't add anymore. So, the second adjustment, for example, section twenty-five went down thirty percent, and the southeast quarter of section thirty-five went up twenty-five percent. And I'm going to give you that too, you're going to have so many papers here, so.
I started looking for these, and I think I've got eight of them in there. And what you know, this is on the bottom.
Now, for these, you can look in the upper right-hand corner, the one I just gave you should say nine twenty-two, so that was our first adjustment. The one I'm giving you now is going to have a nine twenty-five on top. That is the second adjustment. And like I said, the commissioners are, will be satisfied with either one of these, and this is where this falls back on, when you guys have the right to make these adjustments, as you see fit, on these. So, this is where I reduced, any of them that we reduced before, I reduced them additional five percent.
Yeah, we had this meeting on the eleventh, that was our first.
Yes, first attempt was where they had paid thirty-four point nine percent of the area.
So, these are in order then?
Yes, there you go. Okay, this one, um, the levy on that quarter of thirty-five went up another six thousand dollars. Bottom line on it is that.
Not the big difference in order.
With the second adjustment one that I gave you, labeled nine twenty-five, um, an example would be KMTs, theirs went up to forty-seven, thirty-one point seven percent of the total cost. Total billing of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars.
Three hundred and twenty.
Three hundred and twenty-three, four ninety.
And what was it previously?
Uh, the original, it was two seventy, four sixty-seven.
Percentage wise?
Um, percentage wise, they were paying, how much of it were they paying?
Yeah, that was just.
They were paying thirty-four, thirty-four point nine percent of the cost originally.
And now it's forty what?
Forty-one point seven, if you looked at accepting the one I gave you last, the nine twenty-five. It did move fifty-three thousand dollars to theirs.
But they also had a majority being.
Yes, they had, they had almost exactly a third of the area, thirty-two point three percent of the area, so. Um, yeah, you should have two adjustments in front of you, one dated nine twenty-two, one dated nine twenty-five, um, and with the corresponding numbers that I was reading, and I'd be glad to repeat any of those. Not a very big area.
Comments, invite, just be a comment, just public here.
Well, I'm still not happy, but I'm part of the campaign.
You're trying to be honest.
Yeah.
Well, I'm about to give up fighting on this deal. What's not, what I'm willing to do on this new program. I'm not sure. And I still haven't changed very much. So, I'm about to give up, but I'm going to submit damages, and I guess if you pay me for the damage that I think I do, I'm just going to go away. I still think it's unfair to hold these in shame. I'm not very happy that they pretty well destroyed ninety percent of an eighty acres going kitty-corner across it. And so, my contention on that is that the properties they went across, I think what was assessed for an appraisal damages on the far end of the tile is appropriate. I think as you come down the tile, it should be more, because more traffic, more pipe was hauled across. I think that should be somewhat more. And I don't know what kind of percentage you want to use, but then when you come down on my farm, we didn't go across the end of an eighty acres, we went kitty-cornered across the, an eighty acres. So, my contention is, I'd be happy if you just doubled the damages that you've prorated off of here. I don't think that's any more than fair. It, it should be quadrupled if you figure out how the pipe was hauled, you know, a fourth of it was up here, and half of it was there, and the whole, a whole half was across, the whole thing went across mine, every pipe, every bulldozer, every pickup, every lunch bucket. And what really kind of troubles me is, you know, we didn't just pack down fifty feet to get from here to there. We destroyed nine acres across that farm, or ninety percent of that farm, six point seven acres. You know, they make the track here, and now it gets so badly confused, so they move over here, and now it gets so badly confused, and they move over here. Then we bulldozed them all shut, let it dry out, and we started over. So, I guess.
Let me get clear, so, on this damaging, you know, the original appraisal report with the damages, you understand that, and then you turned in your claim.
Right.
Are you saying if you pay those damages on that claim?
Well, and the other thing, I mean, because we'll add, add that to what I, yeah, my damages are separate from that.
Right, right, this sheet here that we got. Because if, you know, I'm, I haven't had a chance to talk to a board member, I don't know what, Rick. The first part, the crop damages for the crop loss, I don't see a problem for fourteen fifty, they're the standard, you've got numbers, you've got, you've got, you know, you know the yields and stuff. Where we're going to maybe have to decide where we're at is, if we, if we leave the damages on the appraisal report where they are, maybe do we pay like, you know, for fertilizer loss, because that's something we would never probably pay, because that's part of the loss for the appraisal report, the harvest and spraying, extra trips, that's supposedly my money always been part of the appraisal damages. And then, um, compaction issues, that's part of that we're paying for. So, I want to make sure what you're asking, I mean, I got this, Bill.
On the phone lines.
If we pay this, I don't think we double the appraisal report.
On the phone lines, Rick.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm letting that ride with the damages that. Oh, okay. So, we're, I'm going to get those and then we're going to do it all over again.
Yeah.
So, that's what happened, and I did this once, and let that one ride.
Okay, you're saying when we go in there, it's.
Now, then I do it again.
Right.
And the same way with, with the damages that the district is paying for, you know, the single time, that was for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, right? Well, now it's twenty fifteen, we're going to go in there, and we're going to tear it all up again, so now we got twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So, I think doubling it is, is no more than fair. I think it should be more than that, but I'd be happy if we leave it at that.
Okay.
And I met with Rick, and I met with the commission, so talking to Dick May, and I was, I was explaining my problems with this bitch through there. Dick says, they had the same issue, so I assumed he knew what he was talking about. He said the way they had to alleviate it was lay a tile on each side of that main. And so, that's why I'm going to add that into there on, on the new deal. It's going to take about thirty-two hundred feet of six-inch tile to put on each side of that main, to solve a problem that I never had before, into a tile that I didn't need in the first place. You following me, Jerry?
Yeah, you're saying you're going to lay a private tile along the main, or?
Well, I'm with Dick, says, they tried to do everything they could.
Because after they put it through, you had trouble, drainage issues, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I was there, yeah.
Did we cover something like that?
Well, they.
Get it on its own, okay. All right, yeah, I see what you're saying.
So, to alleviate that issue, Dick said that's the result, so he's under the commission, so I, I'm thinking this might be right. That main is not going to take any water out of the guy.
Well, no.
It moves water.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's just that it transports everybody's water, it is.
Right. You know, when I look at that.
It's got through some of your tile, is what you're saying, that, but they, they were hooked, we hope they're hooked up, right?
I haven't seen that yet, but I'm pushing. But if I had no way about it, I wouldn't pay anything. I charged the district for going across that eighty. The eighty was already tiled, I don't need any more tile, never did need any tile. I can provide thirty years of crop maps that shows there was never any ground out on that farm, and I only got a forty-eight thousand dollar bill for a pipe that I never needed and that I've never used.
We talked about this some too, with the commissioners in truth. We, we can't get that information, crop production and things.
Right. It'd be nice if.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be wonderful, because you could tell who, who is going to get the benefit.
Who's actually going to benefit.
Yes.
More so than, but you know, this deal, it's just like, if we all had a house right down the road, we all went on the same block, and somebody wanted to come in and put a new house at the end of the block, and they said, well, the old, the old sewer system is overloaded, we're going to have to put a new sewer line up there. So, we dig across everybody's yard to put a new sewer line up to the guy on the end, and we say, thank you, we got a new sewer line for the guy on the end to use, but you guys are never going to be able to filter because you're on the wrong side of the sewer line. We'll go up the old sewer into the new sewer, so that should provide some relief, you know, or, or on it. Did you need it in the first place? Probably not. So, it looks so blatantly obvious to me that the guy that got the benefit of this deal is KMT. I mean, that I just. And when we talk, when we're talking, you know, he owns thirty-three percent of the land, and he's only paying forty percent of the bill, that's a pit. As far as, the way I look at it, I mean, when you look at, look at the map, look at the way this is laid out, look at what's been done, when you look at the benefit on your sheets, holy crap, that's still, still not fair as far as I'm concerned, but. Anyway, I'm going to give this to Trish. Does anybody see any issue with what I have here?
Well, that's what I wanted everybody to make sure they asked you about that before.
The damages are very appropriate here. I mean, he's right, every foot of tile except Gary Lorin went across that farm.
Well, yeah, my, my.
My.
Yeah, mine had.
Right. Yeah, yeah, it did.
Yeah, I wouldn't have had if we'd had one half of mine.
I would, I would, I was just, okay, here's another plot to this, you know, I farm on the other.
Yeah, you, you stopper dog, as long as me, and you just don't bitch.
You're just sitting there, don't push him. That's all, let me, I mean, I'm setting your thing, because I watched that project, you know, and it, number one, it got started, looked like it was going to be a great time to start, all of a sudden, there was a problem, and it got insane, and I had a, okay, number one. Number two, I got damaged too, and I turned in for my crop for one year, I didn't. Last fall, it was bean, so I didn't go out, I should have, I didn't go out and rip it, which I think maybe I probably should have now, but in, in that defense, it was what they acknowledged last fall, I didn't really want to take my expensive stuff out, I didn't have to, so I let another nature go. Well, then we worked, and, and I have a recent bill for this year's crop damage, I think it's going to be some, it's not the end of the world, so I'm not trying to worry about that. But, I do feel from what happened in my area, and then you go to Ed's next section, that area really got, there was activity in there all over the town.
All the time.
I mean, I would say his debt, not just in size, because mine's a smaller field, I think his damage were twice what mine were.
Yes.
So, I'm not so concerned on my part, I was able to plant, string, will be able to harvest, the yield will be down, maybe if it's down too much, I'll put in a minor bill. But, that being said, they were all over his field.
Yes.
These things came through that, well, they were working in their, in worse conditions at times, and then they hit the quicks, and all these other issues going on, so, there are extended damages.
Yes.
Compared to what's on the other, and when you get to the end of this, where it ended up, there was very little damage to be done, because it was at the end, you know, they didn't have.
Oh, yeah, the longer term good, all that sort of.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it was a piece of cake, you know, and it felt like it should have been done.
The guy had the crops out, or, I mean, there's an advantage that you didn't have, I mean, we didn't have. And it's just because of the location that it starts and ends.
Correct.
So, I just, as long as the board's okay with this, these aren't out-of-line charges by no means, it's just that we've changed the formula a little bit, where we played a, paid a flat rate of eight hundred or twelve hundred dollars, down to four hundred, so the only way you're going to compensate is to send in these bills directly.
Yes, correct.
Pay directly to the operator.
Correct.
And I did want to ask, take a look at Linda, just so, because Linda's shady today, show me what hers did. To me, I'm, I'm spending all this time looking, it looks to me like hers went up.
I think it did.
And I.
The worst she had.
Yeah, that Linda, that's why I want this.
How did that happen?
Linda.
Wait, wait, let's.
Linda, Linda, we're, Linda, you're on, I'll, I'll help you on there.
We're not resolving anything, we're just.
Linda, Linda.
Screaming.
No, no.
No, 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 let's figure out what's going on here.
Linda, get this, that's why I wanted to look at this for you, because I, I'm not comfortable the way that is with you right now, that's, and you're here, and I want these guys to look at, I really do, just give them a little time to, they haven't had.
Yeah.
This board has not seen these papers yet, you know, and we haven't seen what those results are, so, we may be back to the original, I don't know. But I don't feel that it's probably fair to Linda, and I don't feel it would probably be fair to the, what's the other lady, and I haven't seen, I haven't seen.
Have you looked these over?
I have.
I have no drainage problem.
I know Linda.
How many times did you hook the old tile onto the new tile south of my place?
Twice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, just, let's just go through it, because we need to take our time and.
Yeah, um.
What'd you get me, like, it did go up?
It did, because she's at the up.
How did that happen?
Because she's at, almost in the same situation as KMT, she's got to go.
I wouldn't be in favor of that, the way that is for her, that's my feeling right now, I'm not, I'm wrong, I don't, I haven't had time to look at this. I'm not, I don't, I haven't had time to look at this.
Well, and I still contend that those two farms are so far away from that main, there's, it's just inconceivable that she would ever, and Foley would ever put a tile into that new main, because they have to go clear across the elephants at their own expense, and they can't hook in anything.
She has the way I would feel about it too. I know what you're saying, I'm trying to get.
Oh, I, I'm trying to be helpful, but I didn't.
She has to go about seven hundred feet to get to it, six to seven hundred feet to get to it.
But I have no drainage problem.
Okay.
Well, yeah. Well, that's why we have to look at it.
Yeah.
I mean, actually, man, I've got so much to look at. Can't get this right, yeah. You gotta line them up to look at them.
Her quarter by going six hundred and some feet could use the entire length of the new system. She'd have the extra expense over KMT of having to build that six or seven hundred feet. That was the reasoning used. You can see the upper end, the one point two factors are in northeast of thirty five.
Okay.
Those were increased because of the same reasoning as the southeast quarter, only it was not increased as much, because she would have to run that extra footage to get to the main. Six or seven hundred feet.
Well, I said my piece, and I said it several times, I'm gonna leave this with you, the only questions you can call me, there's, there's what I come up with.
But this is different than what you submitted.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna put, we're gonna put this tile in if we have to. It's like a, so entirely what I didn't need into a system that I didn't want. But that's, that's what I come up with, I guess, if they settle with that, um, I'll just go away. Debate amongst yourselves.
Well, and maybe we stay with the original proposal on this and, and pay these, go to, pay off, I don't know.
Well, that's open to you guys to answer.
Right.
You know, I, like I said, I, I still contend.
Well, here's for you, Ed, though, cause I wanna make sure. If you contend damages, it's not what you ultimately want, but you're, at least that's offsetting some of this.
Well, I just feel that.
It should be paid that way.
It's, that's what, that's more than fair, and I don't, I don't see any, uh, I don't see any resolve on this.
Right.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing in my, I hadn't looked at this enough yet, but, you know, that's what I'm.
What I'm seeing, Ed, here's, here's the problem with drainage, this is where the real problem gets. We go in, we have a commission, and they have to follow formulas, and they are familiar with those formulas and procedures. We hope they're trying to do the best they can for everybody, and we try to include farmers, because they're the ones that ultimately should know what's going on out there. And we have to have the guidance from the engineer, because he's gonna provide all this information.
Right.
So we go along and try and do the best we can, when these projects get so huge and big that it benefits one person, it's a new twist. So that's a problem. But that being said, if we start varying a whole lot from all of this part, then we're gonna run into these issues back and forth, cause for everybody that has to pay more, somebody else is gonna, that wants less, somebody else is gonna have to pay more. And the way this looks, it's gonna almost make it worse for some of the other.
Well, I, I understand, and we don't want.
It's, it's a burden enough the way it is already, they've already, it's just like buying a new car for fifty thousand dollars, and they come back and say they want another five. Nobody's gonna be happy about that, you know?
I realize there's rules and regulations and stipulations.
But I firmly believe your bills for re, for damages aren't out of line if you're the one that's trying to get that back into shape, cause it takes time to get that ground back into shape.
Yes.
And that's what I say, if you resolve that, the damages, I'm gonna go away.
Well, I just, yeah.
Because I don't see.
You're not gonna go too far, because I'll see you next week. I'm not, I'm not putting you.
But I know there's, there's laws, there's rules, there's regulations, there's stipulations, and.
Right.
From what I've learned, your hands are kind of tied.
And that's why I was glad you could meet with the commissioners, to see kinda what they gotta go through.
The commissioners were glad of that too, and I was too. Just to, to have somebody on the project.
Right.
The most familiar with the project and their land, come in and talk one on one with each, you know, each of us.
This deal here kinda reminds me of the billboard that was downtown every day, you know? Mark Plan said, uh, get your facts and figures, and then you can manipulate them as you wish.
Are you thinking that the first, first one is better than the second?
Well. The second, third one do increase some of the others at the upper end.
Yeah, see, that's what I was afraid we'd run into.
Yeah, cause it's, it's hard for the commissioners and us to say that, well, that the northeast quarter doesn't get near as much benefit as the southeast quarter. Well, it's only six hundred feet as high, and then they've got it directly to their place. So what is that worth? Now, none of those were increased if we go back to the original. But the commissioners are satisfied with any of the three.
They didn't tip their half one or the other?
No, no.
See, Ed, well, there's another thing they can do. What's that lady's name that was, oh, the other lady?
Foley.
Foley, okay, thank you. Where's that at on here? Okay, there we go.
So they were over twenty five.
Foley's the two individual library to feel bad about.
I know what you do.
They rely on those farms for their livelihood, and this is financially catastrophic.
Third's was reduced either twenty five or thirty percent to the second or third.
See, she, she regained, but.
I'm just gonna go, you guys, you, it's, you're resolved, you know, I, good luck.
I'm gonna take the, the, the horse that's at. I'll remember you, I got your number. Well, yeah, see, there you go again, Foley's would be reduced, which is fine.
Yeah.
And I didn't really look at Ed yet. But her, Linda's is, is gonna go the other way, and so is, um, Sandman, and Gibb is already sent, he got, has he got a one or two protesting? Plus he, and I called and talked to him, and he's gonna have the same issue, you know, that Ed was saying.
Mm-hmm.
So you can see how complicated this is.
Oh, well, absolutely.
It's not an easy thing for us to sit here trying to.
No, no.
Who to, who to charge more for.
That's right. That's exactly right, and that's why we have the general guidelines that we follow, and, uh, yeah, and you have to deal with individual situations.
So like Ed's.
See, if we put six hundred feet of tile to the north there at the end, we'd have been looking at the same.
Ratio.
Yeah. The northeast, I'm guessing the northeast quarter had more tile in it, uh, which the commissioners aren't supposed to take into account, so. You, you must have some tile through your quarter?
Well, I'm sure you do.
Yeah.
Well.
But it's been adequate, I didn't need anymore.
Well, okay, so, yeah, one, two, three. Wish we had this on a spreadsheet.
Oh, with the.
All right, so I'm, you know, I, I looked at four or five people with that issues and concern, and just like, I'm gonna get this right.
You definitely agree with it.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what you're doing with.
Well, in all fairness, after the adjustment, I mean, Ed won't mind me speaking, I ain't really his left, you know, his, his went up to twenty five four, it was twenty three six. He's not in the game, he's better off to take the expenses. I almost feel better off staying with the original plan, I feel, I think Foley's gonna get hurt a little bit. But I don't think it's right to take Linda and Jacque Shade, and those guys, or not, uh, Linda and, um, Sandman's.
Oh.
Because they're gonna have the same issue opposite of what Ed's feeling is, I mean, it's, it's, and I think what the problem is, if we start differing and changing too much from what he's reckoned, then every time, what are you gonna have up in here, the one we're doing that tile? How do you think that's gonna come out if you allow, cause I can think of a guy right now that's gonna, what, he's told us several times, I have no benefit on not paying. Well, he, he's gotta pay something.
Yeah, absolutely, he has access.
And Linda realizes that, pay some, it's a shock to her that it's this amount. The only, of course, you have Linda's, if you sell the farms, they'll do it, which you probably don't wanna do. And the next person decides, hey, I've got an outlet, a, a good outlet that you had to pay for, it's close.
The bad part is, these projects only come around every hundred years.
Oh, yeah, so individual.
There's more and more of that.
That's having to pay. Yeah.
Right.
And you're an active county. Some of these counties, I mentioned to you the other day, one of the counties were doing a little work, and they haven't even leveled since nineteen eighty nine. I mean, so you guys are faced with it on a regular basis.
No, I don't think.
Do you mean to reclass the game here, you know, whether you will, you don't make a decision?
Well, hopefully, we can talk through this this morning and, and agree on adjustments, if any, and submit an amended report, and then it's done.
Well, I guess my, I mean, yeah, this is what, this is what we gotta do, guys, what's your opinion? I, if I start talking, then no one. I know, I think I've already lined up already, so I'll let you guys say what you think.
I'm not familiar with the territory, so I don't know.
Oh, God.
No, seriously, you have to know what Miami's talking about.
Well, this shows y'all tough this, yes.
Absolutely.
It's not easy.
No, no.
And Ed, do you have any thoughts? You've worked with this, what do you think?
Honestly, I think we should continue it again, and, cause we just received this information, I don't know, we should make a hate decision.
No, I don't think so, that.
I mean, there's so many factors that you would, or, I mean, I don't think we should think about it anymore.
Well, that's why I was spending ten minutes quickly to go over this, and. It's, it's frustrating, because anytime you take expense from one person, you're gonna add to somebody else.
Yeah.
Now, the original tenant was the one that benefited the most to add something to it, yes, you can do that. But in doing so, there's others that are gonna get at it, well, then all of a sudden, you took it away from others that, you know, that maybe are getting benefits, so.
Mm-hmm.
I guess what I thought too, if we can accept, let me see that last. Not much.
And I have.
I wanna see that.
Nothing, anything, but I'm trying to go over everything, thoroughly.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So is this, oh, he added, what did he add on here?
The bottom.
The tile?
Oh, that's, that's the same one that we have here.
That's the one item he added? Well, then he changed that compaction issue thing. So, seeing, I think you gotta reflect some of that in the, the original, uh, surmise, you know, that, I don't think you can.
See, I didn't know.
Go that far out on that, no, I don't know, I'm not sure he did original. His original bill was two hundred and fifty one dollars, now it's thirty five hundred, well, now you're, he's talking about dick, I don't know. What are you, what's your thoughts on that tile part, adding tile in there?
Well.
We've never paid for that, how would we do that?
We have, I can think of one project in the last few years we've done that on in Peloticon. And the goal there was to try and eliminate any immediate need for landowners to add tile. The district paid for that, that's really the only one we've done it on. I'm thinking we can do a lot with it, with the leveling.
Cause what he's saying is, we paid off both.
People got humped, it created, it created a wet hole on each side.
Yes, yes.
You know, but if we paid off all these damages, that's pretty.
I just can't imagine.
Basically covering his cost of improvement, so he's looking at it that way, in my opinion, and that's just his business side looking.
Yeah.
I could see the areas that were drowned out somewhere, because they're lost.
Correct, cause the weed patches.
And that's pretty large.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm a little nervous about paying for that tile proof, that everybody's gonna start asking.
Yeah.
I maybe could go along with the compaction issues and stuff on there.
It's a lot of money.
But the tiling on top of that.
Three years, almost had four possible.
I guess my concern is, that tile goes through there, but there was a tile going through there. What would it change? I mean, as far as tile, cause the, any tile he has should be hooked into that.
That's right.
I mean, that little area, sure, it's not drained from that tile, but it shouldn't be affecting the tile around it.
Shouldn't be, no way.
So I would have issues with that.
The tile on it should be working better than they did.
Show that to Bruce and Moritz, new page, I promise. They've got, Bruce, you've got this copy too, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I don't have.
Let's see, where did we put our original? Let's see, like, okay, and that's hers original, went to that, went to that, that's fine, but then you've also.
Oh, is what he just married.
Maybe, maybe hers come down some, hers come down about. Hers come down about thirteen thousand. See, Ed's didn't change that much, when you looked at his.
Hers came down thirteen.
Hers married Lily Foley.
Foley.
So that was twenty three, twenty four, it only went, it only went down about fifteen hundred dollars, so he's not.
Yeah, he's not.
His complaints kinda run away on this, if he did damages, is what I'm saying.
Mm-hmm.
But.
But also, look at Linda. No, Linda's.
Lily out of work.
Well, yeah, it went from twenty three, it went from twenty three up to twenty seven five on one of them. The next one went up another four, I mean, it's gonna be seven thousand dollars.
And, and the reasoning was?
And I understand, cause when you look at the areas, and that's where you get in trouble, trying to change these things around from what you originally started.
Yeah.
It doesn't guarantee that everybody's gonna be a winner.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
But we're seeing who is the winner, really.
Mm-hmm.
Kibberts, we don't see what he's got up here, I mean, I just gotta take a minute and look at. Well, see. One, two, three. Kibberts went down a lot.
Were they?
Yeah, well, like, one of them was at twenty three thousand, it went down to fifteen.
Yeah, cause they're, everybody up in twenty five.
That's where you get in trouble, when you see that square this guy.
Mm-hmm. Everybody in section twenty five was reduced twenty five or thirty percent.
For the other ones, that are not necessarily the ones that.
Well, the others is an example.
Absolutely.
Because her situation isn't a lot different than KMT's, other than it appears her drainage was better.
Right.
Yeah, she's six or seven hundred feet from having the same.
In defense for Linda, her farm probably was one that didn't need this type of extensive.
Right.
It was draining, okay, I believe that's what she's telling.
Yeah, yeah.
Terry Arts was the same one.
What he did.
His went down, he was here, wasn't neither in the first one.
Yeah, he was here.
On the back side, the first, or the page on the top of the back.
Well, I mean, your first original estimate, you didn't feel that was out of line to begin with, did you?
No, because of the availability of, of, of the system to people. Yeah, that, and the commissioners too. Now, maybe, I probably shouldn't even throw this out, you could do things like, just do some adjustment on twenty five, so that, um, and do minor adjustments to the southeast quarter of thirty five. But that's not gonna accomplish a lot. Because the southeast quarter of thirty five has absolutely direct access to that new system.
Yeah, they're very close.
Right, and they don't have, yeah, it's adjacent to their property.
Who's that then?
That's, that's, uh, implement.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you can't do that, you're, the southwest, what did you say?
Southeast.
Southeast, oh, yeah, I got right here.
Yeah, they have direct, and that's just a quarter, quarter there, they have that.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Quarter.
I'm sorry.
I mean, it would be appropriate from past classification commissioners I've worked with to have the one that has the absolute direct and on the new go up some, and those that had the cross road and were only on the road to go down some. So.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's.
So you're saying, don't look at these two ice sheets right now, you would look, go back to the original and do some adjustments?
Yeah, that's, that's a possibility.
What I like about that, Rick, is because from the written, uh, objections and ones that are called, it's basically been that the one that requested it is getting the most benefit. So you stay with your base, and then you could add some to that, and then how, how, where would those reductions go? That would be reduced from.
The one's up in section twenty five, because they're, they're strictly on the upper old system, and they through, they have to pass through.
What would be up in there?
Um, always.
Always, yeah, always, wish you did show some reduction, right?
Kibberts.
Can you consider them, just consider it as a.
Yeah.
Well, I'm also considering farms, cause I know the Kibberts farm, and that's a wet farm.
Yeah.
At some point, he's gonna have some real benefit there, if you want, and I believe that, as a land investor, I believe he will go in there and probably improve that.
Yeah.
Because he's got a request. Because he's got a request, you know, the other one go the other direction.
Oh, yeah, okay.
He's gonna throw away, you know, Sam, it's one, you know, Sam didn't feel they had benefit on this one now. They've got a petition for the other, which they will get benefit, but now that we've added this additional on there with Kibberts, a four hundred something, that's gonna increase that, and then there'll be further lying on that one.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, this is not gonna end.
Oh, no, 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 there's always extenuating circumstances on every one of these.
And Carl, I understand what you're saying, it's true, you don't...
You can call the even though there's...
Yeah, but you, I'm looking at the land, I'm not even...
I don't know who his is.
I'm looking at that land up there that he has, and his could really benefit from some of that.
Yeah, there's some land that's...
There's some land that's really wet.
And you always find when talking, you see it underwater every year. So I hate to take too much away from that tax, because I believe he would want, he could, he could add a request, add on to this too.
Yeah, but the old tile goes through some of that, just right at the corner, so it wouldn't have...
So he hook onto this new tile, go farther north? Not really.
No.
This is a different, this is a different...
Because that, I have them on section twenty-five, yeah.
That is a lateral, man.
This is the loop of the old system, it's right, Kibberts would have to hook on to. But, that should not be overloaded like it was, because we've taken so much off of it.
It should make it work better.
Oh, way better, way, way, way better, yes.
How big was that tile that went to the north, that north loop?
Hmm.
Do you remember?
I don't.
Oh, yeah.
I could, we could grab the overall maps, I think they're labeled. That loop, the tile that goes up and back down, as far as sizing.
I was curious if it was thirty-six or twenty-four?
Probably twenty-four or smaller, yeah.
I'm trying to remember.
Yeah.
I think it was a twenty-four.
Yeah, I don't think it was any bigger than that.
The problem we have at hand is every time you raise it, it'll be lowering.
Exactly.
It's not the same with the bottom line.
That's right, that's exactly right.
Get fair, because we gotta come up with a total.
Right, we still need the total.
Bruce, what are you thinking through here in all this? Got any thoughts? I mean, you can see how tough it is, I know that.
Yeah, I wouldn't wanna be the one that's, I mean, like I said, we're just flipping one to make the other one...
And, in theory, we were hoping, I think in theory, we were hoping to put more costs on the ones that are really benefiting now, but in doing so, then you take some off of the ones that you should have, but you also hurt some other ones that you shouldn't have hurt, so... That's why I'm kinda back to the original assessment, and pay on these damages.
That, I'm kinda agreeing with you, because according to that north end there, they don't get much, they're a long ways away from that. And then someday, when this one goes to crap, they'll have to pay again.
They're gonna have to pay again.
Because that one's a hundred, yeah, eighty years old.
Is, is there anything ever built into that?
Well...
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, there's an appraisal reported at the beginning, based on the area of land that we think is going to be affected by the project. So the people there, yeah, which is the temporary and permanent right of it.
And that's a hundred and twenty feet of ninety.
Uh, depends on the depth, so anywhere hundred, anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet.
So there's some, but we reduced this to four hundred, we used to pay like nine hundred to a foul, twelve hundred. Now, we're giving a base for compaction, and then the tenants are turning in...
You're owing for the effect that work is gonna have, it's not paying for any actual crop loss.
It's digging to the soil.
Yep, so the landowner has the right to ask for damages to the...
And when you get a wet year like that, they drive a path until they get stuck, and then they move over and drive another path.
There were times I didn't drive back in there because it had gotten so wet. Yeah. Yeah, the biggest that tile is, that loop is, the right half of it's twenty inch.
Okay, here's another one, that's just like this. Oh, maybe I'll get this right, maybe I get, oh, no, wait, that's, eighteen. Boy, there's so much to look at.
No, I know.
Well... Well, and like, you know, even on Sam, that's, you know, he thought it was too much, his would go down some, but then, he's, his son, or grandson turned in his bill, it's in this pile here, and it's, it's, you know, it's what it should be, but that's gonna compensate for those losses on there, so, I mean, that's... I think we're gonna have to end up paying these expense claims as provided...
Is it reasonable at all?
I'm kinda back to staying with the original formula, because I think you're gonna, nobody's gonna be happy on any of it if you keep changing this over and over again.
Plus, like you said earlier, if you change it, how are you gonna get someone to serve it in the committee?
Well, that's my biggest concern, if you start messing with these, and then what do you, how do you remember what we do today, for one, and then the next guy comes in, are we gonna say, well, we'll do the same for you, we're gonna do, I mean, where are you gonna go with this? It's a no win situation.
The DD two, Gilmore, you know, we've done like five or six different adjustments to try and work through and have it all balanced, and if it rains today, we're gonna try and meet tomorrow to go through that. We've adjusted the units.
And I think what happened in that, I mean, this is off to another subject, but you know, that one, where you revolve city on top of, it makes it so difficult.
Yeah, it does.
So I think we're gonna have to see some adjustment there, but that'll come out a little more evenly. And I think, Rick, somebody, like Rick said earlier, when we started, there wasn't a lot of variance on these dollars for the...
The most even one I've ever seen.
I mean, that was a little hard to tend to, so...
Mm-hmm. Each one of these is different, this is, this one was more uniform than, part of it was, it wasn't that big of an area.
Let's see, that didn't change.
Less than twelve hundred acres.
So what are we gonna gain by fableting or way...
I don't think we do. Sorry, Chris.
It'd just be evaluation of the damages.
I think Chris has got a legitimate question on the crop expense, and we need to review that, so we can go through that, we got a little time on that. But I guess, in laying this all out and hearing every side, and I know it's hard to help other one side not hurt the other, and if we don't stay to some uniformity, I think this is only gonna snowball in the future, because there's gonna be more of these projects coming on, even with seventy-five percent cost share, we're gonna have the same issue.
Absolutely.
And you start messing with, I mean, you gotta have a legitimate, and I think there would have been some more to get more on this, but I don't think it fairly, because then you gotta treat the other ones the same way you treat this one in that area, so they're gonna go up.
That's right.
So I would make a motion that we accept the original assessment that was presented on September eleventh, I believe, the original one.
Oh, yeah, that was Friday.
Was that the one we did?
Yeah.
No, no, Friday, when did we leave? Four, four hundred and fourteen, right?
Are you sure? You meant, wasn't?
Okay, that's when we had this original assessment.
This original copy?
Because we'd like, you know, it was before that, let's just say the original assessment, don't put a date, because it was before that, maybe we gave them three weeks to figure this out. And then we'll see if anybody else wants to...
Yeah, I have the thirteenth, at nine fifteen.
Is that when we did it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just two weeks, I remember, I was worried about getting it done last week.
Well, that's right.
So Jerry, you have a motion to give the original, revision for that all?
And then I think we'll look at these expenses, and I think we'll have to work on those, a lot of them, someone else. Because Ed's point, Ed's point's well taken about the amount of traffic that went through.
Oh, absolutely.
There was stuff parked there all year long, back in the day.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And the other landlord got a hit from that, yeah, rather than just one landlord.
See, there it is, it comes outside everybody else, gets worse.
Yeah.
That's outside the area.
Can you hear a second from Jerry's motion?
Somebody can second, and then we can discuss more if you want, you know.
I'll second the motion, so we can discuss it more.
Here's the motion in a second, in the local classification, District Six, Level A one, we're open for more discussion. We talked about three different...
And I think the reason I'm willing to accept the original one, it doesn't appear too far from the way we do stand, I think, but I also think we're gonna be compensating more on the damage side of it.
Yes, yes, and like...
I'm gonna be willing to do that.
Yeah.
And I think Ed would...
And we'd support that.
I think what, what's interesting to me is Ed, Ed coming with a pretty firm notion of what things should be done, and when he said that with the commission, I think he found out how difficult this is.
Yes, he did.
I think it was good for him to be on part of that, and he really, I think he has a better understanding today of what's going on.
Bob Leach in fact said, you know, you really should sit on these, you should be on one of these.
Or, is this the word?
Yeah.
Well, you know, I still got a hard time opening that section twenty-five, where you're so far away from that new main, because, okay, now what happens when that loop goes back? Who pays for that loop?
Right now, it's part of the main, so everybody would pay, and this main is not broken down in lower main and upper main, so everybody would help. It's part of the main.
It is part of the main, so it isn't considered a lateral, so that they won't get hung with the other.
So everybody would have to pay.
Everybody'd have to pay.
So that makes it more...
That makes it a little more fair, because I know in another thirty years...
If we're lucky.
If we're lucky, because that main, how old is that?
Yeah, probably back to...
DD six, it would have been about nineteen ten, probably, if you're looking at a hundred-year-old main.
Hundred plus.
And other reclassification at that time too, though, right?
Yes.
A little change to Ben's that...
So as long as they're all in existence, somebody would have to still put a petition, and maybe enough to say no at that time.
The loop probably wouldn't be a lot bigger than it is now, because we've taken so much drainage off of it. I mean, but it'd be replaced because of the condition of it more than anything.
Yeah, I know, we're more worried about the condition of it.
Yes, correct.
Because it's supposed to be about a hundred years, a hundred fifty-five years old. That was in nineteen oh six.
Okay, see, that's probably guessing ten.
Nineteen oh six. So the flip side is, we're just going by the, the way the rules are set up, I mean, it isn't like we're trying to decide.
No, if we start very interrupting, then we have to avoid that, and there's gonna be other people that are gonna ask for the same thing.
Exactly.
And then you're gonna have to try to keep track, how do you do, how do you consider this one, is it the same as the other, is there a difference?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have other discussions?
I don't like it.
I don't like it.
Well, that's...
I wish we had a magic wand to...
The one we have, we may, we're not gonna have any more information.
No, this is good information, you have to decide.
The damages are a separate issue, the commissioners made that appoint while I was there and after he was there. Damages may be appropriate, but it's not part of the decision-making on the reclassification.
Right. So like Rick said, he doesn't believe it's fair, I don't believe it's fair.
But, but it's gotta be addressed, and that's what our task is today, I guess. I do appreciate the committee commissioners meeting again, I personally really think it was a good deal to have Ed there.
Absolutely.
Because he walked out here not wanting to mess with us, I mean, Ed don't walk away from controversy like, he just didn't, he knows it's not an easy thing.
That's right.
That's why I'm like, come by.
What's that?
Feel like you come by.
That could be too. Linda? Okay, with where we're at, I know it's...
I wish we could do some.
But I don't think it's fair to go back and change this and make it a hardship even more on the ones that are already having issues, so...
Yeah, if it's reduced somewhere, that's, you said, whatever you said.
But I think we can compensate a lot of that with...
Yes, absolutely.
That was fair.
Perfectly appropriate.
I do both for, they were good, going somewhere, they don't get, do nothing.
And they don't work, putting in the business.
Right.
Right.
Right, and it's right, no matter what it's down there.
That's a good price, but they should be... Okay, we have a motion, and a second, other discussion, we're gonna go.
Yeah.
So that's the end of the session. And we have a hard situation, but maybe still have a choice. All those favor the motion in the state, say hi, uh, opposing, motion here.
And that was tough.
Yeah.
Two, one and two are pitched, right?
Yeah, the two I gave you today, for just options for consideration.
And there it comes. What else we got to go and turn that in, Rick?
Just to let you know, Denver Underground has a project here in town that's gonna take them three, four days. So they're moving off of one twenty-five for three to four days, to come in here, put in several solar services in a subdivision. I don't know if it's a Dakota City one or where, but...
Where's that? Dakota City or Eagle Ridge, I would assume it's Eagle Ridge. I think they're gonna do a new street up there or something.
Okay, we did that, Rick?
Oh, boy, I don't know.
Choking on that.
Hit a Mountain Dew this morning, I wish we'd have done that.
There you go. Well, we didn't see commissioners thanking for their expert, I mean, this isn't easy stuff, I don't, I don't know if I could ever serve in that, it's tough.
And then Gilmore City, they just kill it.
You're working on that?
We'll meet as early as tomorrow, depending on the weather, people are in the field enough, it's been hard to get them together. Just a real quick summary on that, I had ranges of points that was, I had for a goal for agricultural, residential, and commercial.
Okay.
Well, the factors we did for hard surface, we got well outside my range. So I've got the residential and the commercial adjusted back to within my acceptable ranges, and that made a significant effect on residential and commercial ground, as far as reduction. Now, we're back to the same thing, because it was being reduced, they ground it up, so...
So what part, that's how you did that again, I was trying to sort, I'm sorry.
Sure. I have ranges that have worked on past reclassification data, when our zero to a hundred points, Ed was zero to ten.
All right.
Residential was from twenty to forty.
Okay.
Commercial was from forty to a hundred.
All right.
And with the adjustments we made for impervious area, we got well outside those ranges.
You did?
On residential and commercial.
On the...
On our, the one that was submitted.
Impervious areas, you're saying anchoring, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
So you were using a higher range than what you...
Right, ended up a higher range than I typically use.
How did that happen, do you think?
Well, it's, within the office, it's, they start, they use the numbers I have, like, they started at twenty-five on residential, and then the factors they applied for impervious got it outside the range, yeah.
On top of that.
Yeah, it's the same factors we used in others.
Some reduction that...
Absolutely, absolutely significant adjustment.
All right.
Um, and not, not drastic on the egg, but it increases, um, just because...
Which is still one area, so it should spread out.
Yeah, exactly.
It's gonna be ideal in this deal, when we got such a small number of workers.
Yes, thousands...
So what, how?
Yes.
So you're here working the meeting this week?
Well, depending on the weather, I've got calls into Pat and Brent, and Brent's hard in the field.
Okay, when you get done with that, sit down with Trish and work up a timetable, how we can move forward so we can get the levy in the spring. We wanted to...
Gotta get the levy, yeah.
On this.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And somebody needs to make a contact with Mike and find out how much was left in the fund that would offset some of this interest. Try to get that to us by the next, are we gonna meet with you next week?
We're meeting, yeah, tomorrow.
Oh, man, yeah, well, you're not gonna have time for that.
No, 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 there's no way.
But you see what I'm saying, get, I want, I want a timeline about, so we can step this out and get it planned out.
And I know, at the forecast I was hearing, there's a good chance of rain tonight, and if that's the case, yeah.
We can talk some more tomorrow, but we're running late now.
And I'm gonna, late this afternoon, I'll probably call Pat and Brent again, and make it a conditional meeting, if we get the rain, plus meeting.
Since you're gonna be here for this other side.
Yep, yep, that's right.
But it isn't, it isn't the cities that are benefiting from this, it's the, the farmer. They have no way for...
The city would affect that. Yes, this will affect a lot of that.
But if we can get some help on the interest side, that's gonna make a big difference.
Oh, yes.
Try and get a time scheduled with Trish, when we can have the hearings, and let's, I want something black and white, and let's try and follow it.
Yes, absolutely, that's...
And make contact with Mike, find out what he's thinking on that, interesting.
And when I talked to him before, it was, he would participate, yeah, whatever's left is based on your agreement with them, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, see you later, talk to you more.
Yeah, there you go.
Most of them are of range.
We have a second.
All right.
All those favor going out of range, say hi.
Hi.
We're out of range, most of you here.
Thank you.
The rain's gonna fall.
Are you sitting more?
Yeah, okay, maybe you just came in.
So you and I, because you and I, there was a different deal with all that crap. Uh, this is Kevin Stein, he put in the same thing, the same...
You got a couple of costs?
A product about Gilmore City, I was there.
Oh, okay.
Will Hard, yeah, Gilmore City, all right, so he, this way like Davis, he put in for his crop loss on five point nine, county hat, he used the county hat originally. Crop... Crop insurance, he was doing. Well, totally sick, and then he's got.
The disease.
And he had to do in there. Everybody, I mean, I signed on this. Are you okay with that? It's gonna go to the bonding company anyway. What else can you do? We let Davis put one in.
Mm-hmm.
So interesting to see how they figure out what's causing it, that'll be a challenge.
Five point six.
And that'll be a challenge. Yeah. Yeah, they have the best.
Yeah, but that's not really a bad idea.
Had a good weekend.
Yeah.
So why was it?
Yeah.
And we should take a little break.
I gotta go. Yeah.
Yeah, but we'll see, I guess.
Where did you even add another law?
What happened? Why, why did he have that law? I mean, the same, I said, Davis.
Well, I always was the same.